Tom DuVoyce, thank you for being here today. I think the best way to perhaps start this is to ask you to reflect a bit on the last four years and perhaps more on the last couple of years. And share with us your reflections on what's going right and wrong with the city council right now in terms of its conduct and decision making and policymaking.
Starting with the easy questions. Yeah, well, you know, as I started the campaign and definitely have kind of looked back at the last four years, starting with what I was thinking before I ran four years ago. And it's pretty pleased to see, I think I actually achieved a lot of the things I ran on four years ago. You know, we, there were a lot of kind of large development projects happening, a lot of exceptions being granted. We were losing a lot of kind of beloved stores in town. And so particularly in the first two years, we passed some ground floor retail protection. We put PC zoning on hold, which was kind of customized zoning for public benefit projects. And I think developers really kind of started to get the message and we started to see fewer and fewer projects come to council that were asking for exceptions, like people were trying to stick to zoning. And again, looking at kind of the first two years, I was particularly around land use issues, I guess, what people would characterize as a five-four majority at the time. And then the last two years has been a four-five minority. And so it's been an interesting shift. I think, I honestly think those first two years, I think we were fairly respectful of the minority. I think we tried to get to kind of unanimous decisions or at least seven-two votes. I don't think that's always been the case in the last two years. I think there've been a couple of examples of just kind of, kind of ramming, ramming things through, if you will, on a, on a five-four vote. And so, I mean, that does concern me. It's, it's one of the reasons I want to run again is I think, I think the council needs some kind of thought, some thoughtful, experienced voices on council. And generally, I think I've done that. I've tried to kind of approach each decision by getting it formed and having an honest debate and then making a decision.
Is the reduction of the council from nine to seven going to help, do you think, in terms of council dynamics?
Um, I actually-
Or not necessarily?
I don't think it will.
What's your opinion about that?
I mean, my biggest concern is just the workload goes up. It's not just a Monday night meeting. There's meetings all through the week. There's regional activities. And spreading that workload among nine council members certainly helped, particularly someone like me who's working full-time. So I think my concern is going down to seven is, you know, will the pool of people willing to run for council shrink? I do think, I do think there's a chance the meetings will be shorter. But they said, I'm kind of concerned about the workload.
I guess I'm more interested in the interpersonal dynamics of members of the council and whether um-
Yeah, I don't-
Reducing them is really, is related at all.
Yeah, I don't see it being related. I think it's going to be kind of people's positions as they come in.
Yeah.
So you're talking, if I understand you right, about a certain level of discord that comes from a disrespect, is that it, between council members? You were talking about needing more experienced and thoughtful members?
No, I wouldn't say it's disrespect. I, I think a couple of things are going on. I think, for whatever reason, we, we have kind of gotten to this kind of era of divisive language. And I think, again, how people approach politics, I mean, to me, local politics is really about serving the community and trying to find kind of an efficient solution that kind of meets the needs of the majority. It's not really a kind of a win-dos kind of politics. You might see it more at the federal level. But I, I do think some members of the council may approach it kind of more as a debate to be won, rather than kind of seeking compromise or, or reasonable solutions. And again, I've been concerned, particularly in these last two years, about kind of late-night kind of rash decision-making that really hasn't been vetted by staff, really discussed very much at all. You know, as opposed to kind of our more typical process, which is to introduce an idea, maybe even, you know, discuss it with staff, have them do some analysis and, and then make a decision.
So is the solution to what's happening just getting the right people on council? Or is there something that you as a council member could suggest or try to further?
Well, I think the people on council are really important. And I, I do think that some of the candidates, from what I can tell, will be more thoughtful, more kind of look at data and facts to base their decisions on. So, you know, and I think I've been, I think I've been pretty clear about my positions. I think I've explained my, my decisions. And I've been, I think, very consistent. I kind of ran on a certain set of values and ideas, and I think I've stuck to that pretty consistently.
I wonder if we could talk a little bit about the meeting two weeks ago on the rent stabilization-
Sure.
-colleagues memo that you authored with some of your colleagues. That seemed to epitomize the way in which this council kind of deals with that kind of an issue. And you were criticized for having offered this amendment that would include rent stabilization as part of the referral to the Policy and Procedures Committee, seemingly after you had agreed that that wouldn't explicitly be in that memo. And it sounded, reading between the lines, that Corey Wobak, who, who was a co-author, who had agreed to become a co-author, had sort of acquiesced with the idea that by not explicitly mentioning it, it left it available for the policy committee to, to talk about it if necessary. And it was your wanting to be more explicit about it that kind of triggered what turned out to be a rather unfortunate discussion.
Right.
Could you address the, the criticism that that was the equivalent of the 11th-hour change that you just referred to as-
Sure.
-that others occasionally have made, that didn't get the vetting, wasn't expected, didn't allow for the public to comment on it, et cetera?
Yeah. I think you summarized it pretty well. So, you know, the way the colleague memo process works is two, three, or four council members write a memo. We submit it to staff and it's supposed to stay confidential while staff kind of analyzes it, see what it's going to cost. And then it comes back to council. And so last summer, council members Q Holman and I had worked on this memo. And again, the idea was to talk about forms of renter protections, really. The idea was to talk about all forms of renter protections. And to really start the conversation, there was nothing in the memo that recommended a particular policy. That initial meeting, where it came, I think it was last fall, there were a lot of, a lot of landlords showed up. Wasn't, wasn't clear if they were even Palo Alto landlords. It kind of got reduced to, we don't want rent control, right? Which was a very kind of narrow interpretation. And then as time progressed and I think a couple of things changed, there was the issue with the president hotel. It was also election season. This idea of renter protections came back. And so I basically revived the original memo, talked to Corey Wobak. And as he said, he suggested some, what he, what he characterizes as minor language tweaks to just kind of basically have council approve it, but send it, send it to committee, just like the original memo, to really discuss the full range of options. And so we agreed to do that. We submitted it to staff. And then once it was with staff, council member Wobak, I think more than once publicly said that the new memo prevented discussion about, you know, rent stabilization. And so that's where I, where I felt he'd actually kind of gone against what we had discussed. And so when it did come to council, I wanted to be very transparent about what was in and what's in out. And that's why I thought it was necessary to make that motion, just to say that the full range of topics was on, on the table. And it turned into a pretty emotional heated debate at that point.
Did he, did you let him know that you were going to make that additional-
I didn't. I was, it was something that I kind of, kind of decided to do that evening.
In hindsight, would that have been a good idea, do you think?
Yeah, yeah.
Or do you think that would have led to some efforts behind the scenes to upend?
Yeah, it probably would have been a better thing to do. So, you know, we're not all perfect. And, you know, I was just kind of thinking of this, I came into the meeting and I really just wanted to make sure that things were clear. So.
And did you have any idea that there would be a further amendment to lower the number of units to two from five?
No. And again, I wish I'd been a little, little more on the ball that night because I think it was, even when it was being made, it was kind of, wasn't a serious motion. It was really meant to kind of be a poison pill for, for the motion. I mean, the real intent was to have a discussion about renter protections for, for larger apartment buildings. And kind of what happens if a large amount of housing is taken off the market or, you know, changed dramatically in a short period of time.
So on the rent stabilization question, or the rent control question, that scary word, do you have in mind some modest rent stabilization approach that you think the city would benefit from considering at a, in a more vetted, formal way?
Yeah, I don't have a, a, I don't have a detailed proposal. I honestly wanted to have a thoughtful discussion. I have been kind of watching what's going on with other cities in the Bay Area. I've talked to some council members over in Fremont. They recently passed an ordinance that limited large increases in rent, but it was pretty flexible and really wasn't even called rent control. And so, you know, I, yeah, I think there's probably some moderate things we could do. I think in analyzing and studying it carefully makes a lot of sense. Wasn't something, nobody made a proposal that we like adopt rent control tomorrow, though I think some people were trying to kind of create fear by, by saying that.
You mentioned earlier that the tone kind of shifted in the last couple of years with more split votes. I think one of the kind of more exciting meetings was in January 30th, 2017, on the comp plan, after which you wrote a guest opinion about democracy being hijacked and referred to the five council members who took a series of votes on the comp plan as wolves in sheep clothing. I'm curious if you have any thoughts as to whether that approach helped or hurt the tone of the council from there on?
You know, I, I think it actually helped. I think it was a pretty, it was a pretty radical move at council. And again, it was kind of an example of having, having a slim majority and, and pushing through, again, pretty radical idea of stripping all programs from the comp plan. So I did feel very strongly about it. I used some strong language. I think it was a week or two later that council member Wobak came back and apologized and we kind of restored a lot of those things. You know, it's a tough call. You know, generally, I try to focus on the issues and I will kind of stand up and point out, argue, argue the policy. I try not to attack people personally. But we had had, you know, 20, 22 to 25 people working on that thing for a long time. And I think the community members really struck some, some tough compromises that, you know, I wasn't happy with everything. And I don't think other council members were happy with everything. But having the council kind of recreate those compromises wasn't going to happen. That was going to take a long time as well. And so it was a case where I really thought we should kind of listen to this community committee who had really, I think, tried to balance a lot of different interests in Palo Alto.
And why did you take the opposite view when it came to what the committee had recommended on the growth cap?
The committee?
I assume you're talking about this, the advisory committee?
Yeah, I think the advisory committee, if I recollect right, they, it kind of punted on several of the caps. Those came back to council directly from, from staff.
But what you had in front of you, what the initiative was going at, the proposed initiative was going after was to-
Oh, you're talking about the citizens' initiative, not the comp plan?
Well, they were seeking to reduce by half the cap that had been adopted as part of the comprehensive plan, unless I'm-
Well, so going back to the comp plan, the citizens' committee that worked on the comp plan, I don't think came to any agreement on the caps. And so as part of this January 30th meeting, I think a lot of the caps were either weakened or removed by this kind of slim majority in council. And-
So you reject the idea that, that the council's action to reduce the cap to the 850,000 square feet, the one where Corey switched over basically to the side, that that was in effect overturning or going against the work that had taken place by the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, the committee, that committee had not agreed to any, any of those, those caps. They actually couldn't come to an agreement. So the initiative came to us in June during our regular session and I think either I or Eric Filseth moved to put it on the ballot. That vote lost four to five. There was, we scheduled an emergency meeting in the middle of the summer and there was an ask of staff to do an incredible amount of analysis. Staff came back, had that meeting, and at that meeting, staff basically said they didn't have time to do that analysis. They gave us the same staff report they gave us a month ago. And, you know, a lot of people turned up that night at council and, and again, it, it was basically maintaining the historic growth rate and the rate that had been in the previous comp plan. Yeah, so I did, I did vote to just adopt, adopt it.
And were you surprised that you had thought it passed?
Well, like you said, one of the people voting flipped over. I think, you know, that, you know, I don't-
I mean, what was going through everybody's head at that moment?
I mean, I, what was going through my head was, it was an election and, and Corey looks a little white and I think he might flip over.
And he hadn't said, he hadn't said a word during the entire discussion?
Well, again, when it came to us in June, I think he pretty much spoke against it. And I think it was, I think it was very, pretty, pretty well thought out. I mean, I supported the initiative. And I've spoken many times, I think, you know, we have this incredible demand on housing and adding more and more office just continues to fill that demand. And even under our existing office zoning, the, the density of office workers is increasing, the density of the research parks is increasing. So I, I don't think we were in any way hamstringing Palo Alto's growth, kind of sustainable growth, if you will.
You mentioned a recent debate that you'd like to see a new kind of zoning that would allow retail with residential on top. As you know, such a kind, such zoning doesn't exist and planned community zoning also doesn't exist. It was kind of put on hold. Can you tell me your philosophy on reviving the PC to allow those kinds of projects?
Yeah, I don't think we need to revive the PC. So I talked about this four years ago. It's now part of the comp plan. So it was a retail residential zone. I think it's one of the new programs in the comp plan. And so the idea is where we have mixed-use zones as part of our housing plan, we can look at, at kind of redefining mixed use. And so instead of, I mean, leaving it up to developer in terms of retail, office, and residential, it would be retail and residential only. Because a lot of the projects we've been getting have been predominantly office with maybe a couple of housing units and they tend to be large, expensive housing units.
So if that could be achieved without a PC, are there any projects that you think would require a PC that you would support? Or would you just not want to see a PC come back under any circumstances?
Yeah, I actually think we should get rid of PCs. I wouldn't mind seeing a kind of a 100% affordable housing zone. So you could think of it as a PC, but it'd be a very specific PC for one purpose.
When you say affordable housing, what do you define affordable?
Yeah, for me, it's below-market rate housing. I think that's where the city should really focus its funds and its efforts. Nobody else really pushes below-market rate housing. Yeah, I'm a little concerned we passed this affordable housing overlay with 120% of average income, which starts looking awful lot like market rate housing. And I'm concerned that we made it harder to find places for true below-market rate housing because affordable, I mean, market rate housing projects will compete for that land, basically. So again, I think, I think we've got a little fuzzy in, in some of our arguments over housing.
Would, would you be willing to reconsider the 50-foot height limit for an all BMR affordable housing project?
I'd really like to stick to-
For example, on a city parking lot?
Yeah, I mean, I'd really like to stick to the 50-foot height limit. I think, you know, the city, when you look at what it's zoned for, we have a tremendous amount of kind of undeveloped building envelope, if you will, even under our existing height limits. I think it'd be more, I'd rather see us look at maybe zoning changes that would encourage smaller units kind of within the existing height limits. You know, we have a, we've talked about it a little bit at council, but the idea that you could build as many units as you want within a certain FAR. So I think there were ways that we could maybe encourage like studios, one-bedroom apartments, which we don't have a lot of inventory in Palo Alto.
What's your objection to going above the 50-foot height limit? We have Channing House, we've got apartments downtown that are well over 50 feet-
Yeah.
-if, if done appropriately. I mean, given how much more you can use the expensive land and spread the costs and, and house more people, what's your objection to that?
I just think, I think, I think the people in Palo Alto like the 50-foot height limit. I think it, it's a certain scale that fits in really well with our tree canopy, kind of our environment. I mean, we, we have some exceptions already for mechanical equipment and, I mean, I said no, I would not really consider exceptions. I mean, maybe, maybe for a specific kind of 100% affordable senior housing project. I just don't want it to become a slippery slope. I actually think kind of, kind of the layout of Palo Alto and kind of why, why people like to live here, 50 foot is a, is a pretty good number.
But you don't hear any complaints about the buildings that are eight or 10 stories in downtown Palo Alto, do you? That are virtually historic buildings at this point?
Yeah, I think people, I think a lot of people realize they came before the 50-foot height limit.
Yeah.
I think we would hear complaints that we were building eight or nine more of those. So, and I, nobody's saying, you know, let's get rid of those buildings, but I'm not sure a lot of people say that they generally would just like to have no height limit.
Going back real quick to your retail and residential zoning, does that, how does, how do, how do you apply that to projects? Do you have to rezone?
I think we're waiting for staff to come back as part of the housing plan. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure if they can just redefine what mixed use means or the proportions that are allowable. Right now, in our zones today, I don't think we specify, well, I mean, we have some, some specification, but I think we could specify a larger percentage or a very large percentage of residential.
Okay. So the planning commission right now is looking at making RM15s, or the R15s, RM15s, into R20s, having that discussion. So the densification of various existing zones. I know a lot of people are concerned that the R1s might at some point become R2s. We're already seeing ADUs being added to people's properties. What are your thoughts on densification when it gets to that level of zones? Not the ones that are already multifamily.
Are you talking about the R1s? The R15s?
R1s.
I mean, generally, again, I think a lot of people who invest in the community, live in an R1 neighborhood, expected to say largely the same. And I, I think that, that the R1 residential neighborhoods should largely say the same. I mean, we, we passed ADU ordinance, we're seeing, you know, a decent number of applications for ADUs. And I think we're going to refine that over time. But, you know, in terms of like rezoning an R1 neighborhood as an R2 or an R4, you know, I don't think that will happen. And I certainly wouldn't support that happening. But in places where we have multifamily housing, again, going to an R20, maybe that makes sense. I don't, I don't think that's really the barrier today. I think it's, I think a part of it's toeing the line on limiting office development so that doing residential development becomes more attractive. I mean, we haven't seen a ton of market rate residential projects coming to us. And I think part of that is because people are hopeful that they can, can build more profitable office buildings, so.
I think one proposal to encourage more housing that's kind of floated around in various projects is reduced parking requirements, particularly, particularly for affordable housing or for really small units. I know that in a recent discussion of accessory dwelling units, you were very skeptical about a proposal by some council members to pretty much eliminate parking requirements for ADUs. Can you tell us a little about your philosophy on situations in which parking requirements could be modified to encourage housing?
Yeah, so, I mean, there's the project at the corner of Pageville and El Camino, which I, I voted for as kind of a pilot project for this idea of, of car-like parking. And that's a multi-unit building, pretty close to the Caltrain station. I did not support eliminating all parking in ADUs. And then again, that was one of those late-night, somewhat rash decisions without, that wasn't really supported. But, you know, an ADU can be in any neighborhood, can be very far from any kind of transportation. So I think it's clear that a lot of those people are going to have cars, so.
So you don't have like a broad philosophical objection to reducing parking requirements? It's just based on situation?
I would like to see it be supported by, by good data. And so I have seen some data around disabled housing or senior housing, where I think we could have less, less parking. But, you know, a lot of the proposed projects, I really haven't had data to support that that those would necessarily be people without cars or less cars.
Did you have enough data for the 2755 El Camino to support the project?
That's the affordable housing project?
No, it's the micro-units, the workforce housing of Pageville and El Camino.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you mentioned you want to have a lot of data before you could support it.
Well, I said, I think we, we talked about that, it being a pilot project and kind of approving it to, to measure and see, see what happens. And I think they had, they had a decent amount of parking and very specific programs proposed for bikes and commuter passes and that kind of thing.
So you mentioned the need for more market rate housing. How do you, what are the levers that you can employ or do you support that would make that market rate housing aimed at the lower end of the market-
Yeah.
-as opposed to the high end, given the high cost of construction and the high cost of land? How do, how do we get what you want in a way of-
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I said I supported market rate. I, I think I said the city should focus on below-market and then-
No, but recently, you just made the observation that we, we need in general more, more housing.
Yeah. So again, I think the market needs to figure out how to build, you know, the market rate housing. I, I do support like the teacher housing project that Joe Smithian is proposing. And I think, I think those projects, I mean, that project, basically getting the land for free and that's what kind of makes that project work. It's, it's really hard to see if a, if a private development's truly market rate, like how, how you have it so that it just doesn't go to the highest bidder. I mean, part of that was this idea about kind of, kind of renter protections. We have a lot of people in town who have rented for a long time. And, you know, you'd like to be able to, people to have kind of stability and kind of where they live, if they're able, if they're paying the rent and able to pay reasonable rent increases, you know, not just be pushed out of town because somebody can charge much more and there are other people willing to pay much more.
Well, do you, do you believe in the, do you agree with the concept- Well, do you, do you believe in the, do you agree with the concept that residential development that's got fewer unit, I mean, more units in it, more smaller units is going to be more affordable than?
I think it will cost less, but I mean, we're, we're seeing some, you know, pretty, pretty incredible rents for small units. Like even, even this project we're talking about, I think is, it's going to be, you know, thirty five hundred dollars a month for a studio apartment.
Right. So, so what's, what's the policy answer to that dilemma then? Because you're, you're really not providing the housing that you've talked about as being the greatest need.
Well, so again-
For the lower spectrum of the-
Right. I mean, so again, I think the city can try to, to get some below market rate projects going. I think we can, we can try to support some of these projects for teacher housing. I think the Stanford GUP is critically important. I think when you look at our comp plan and what, what's in there, we were actually shifting the jobs housing imbalance within Palo Alto. But then Stanford kind of, kind of threw that to the winds, right? So they're within our area of interest and they were, they were building an incredible amount of new lab space, industrial space, but not housing to go with it. And then I think part, you know, this is a regional issue. There, we have a lot of big employers on the peninsula. I think they're starting to spread out and I think that's going to be part of the solution. You know, Google's building Dare Don, where San Jose has a lot of housing and if, you know, get some more jobs there. And I'd love to see these companies also open kind of offices on the East Bay. I don't think it's necessarily something that Palo Alto can kind of address on its own, so.
Well, your greatest leverage point on housing is use of city property that developed, right?
Yeah, I can say that, I guess.
So are, are you, would you advocate the identify, identification of city parcels that could be developed in conjunction with a, a affordable housing developer to provide that kind of housing? I mean, your critics basically have said that you talk about housing, but when it comes to the policy that would create it, you have reasons for not supporting those policies. So if the highest leverage point is in taking city owned parcels and allowing those to be fully developed as affordable housing units, I don't hear you advocating for that.
I, I guess a couple of things come to mind. I mean, first of all, it's very difficult for the city to acquire land. So if it was, if it was kind of the best, highest use of the land, I, I would be open to it. Again, I don't think we should do it with all of the city's property. I think, I think the city, over time, has, has, has needed its property. So, I, to me, it's, it's, it's like most things, it's a question of degree. And so if you took one or two of the city's lots and you put affordable housing on it, and below market rate housing is what I, I would support, you're going to help some number of people, you're not going to address the Bay Area's housing.
Well, nothing is going to, is going to address that, obviously, or really solve the housing jobs imbalance. But the, the Page Mill Road so-called car light experiment.
Right.
One could certainly make the case that a better experiment would be to take a large city parking lot and redevelop it into a couple of basement levels of parking with four, five, or six, or seven stories of, of housing.
I mean, that's essentially what's happening there. I, I don't know why you're saying it would be better, it's-
Well, because it's not city owned land. I mean, it's going to be market rate housing and you're not going to be addressing the housing need that is the most critical.
Yeah. Yeah, and again, I do think we have a severe need for senior housing. So I could see that kind of project happening for senior housing. You know, I think we're going to try a lot of, a lot of different things. But I, I think we should be honest about what we're talking about. I think people, again, throw around the word affordable and we end up passing kind of market rate projects. So that's, that's not really helping on the below market rate side at all.
Right.
I think I just heard you say that the businesses should shoulder more of the burden for housing workers so that the jobs housing imbalance comes down. Are you suggesting that there should be housing in the Stanford Research Park? That some of the major corporations should be including housing as part of its development?
I haven't specifically suggested housing in the research park. I mean, I am saying that I favor the scenarios where Stanford builds more housing for their staff as part of the general use permit.
Okay, so the two alternatives plus the application, you'd favor the highest possible alternative?
Yeah, I would, actually.
How, how would you handle the traffic impacts that the county analysis projected?
I mean, I think it was a little disingenuous the, under the lower scenarios, those traffic impacts are there. The local trips are unpleasant and, or wherever those people live. So they weren't included in the original analysis. So, you know, you would be getting rid of the long commute and you would be having potentially, you know, local trips. I know, I mean, Stanford is, runs a great transportation system. I think they've shown an ability to, to manage that. So I think, I think we could work with them to kind of figure that out.
Do you think they should fund something, the Palo Alto Shuttle or some city services? Because I presume the people aren't just going to be staying on the Stanford campus if they're living there, their spouses and, and other affiliated persons?
Well, it's possible, I mean, you're getting kind of very detailed on a very specific project. I mean, if, if Stanford did build all of that housing, I think they would essentially be building a small community there, right? So potentially a lot of those trips could be pretty local. And then if you have a spouse who's working, yes, it's going to be added to, I guess, what we need to manage as part of Palo Alto's transportation plan.
I wanted to pivot to infrastructure unless you guys have-
I was also just going to ask you about funding for other transportation projects, grade separation.
Yeah.
Where's the money going to come from?
So I, I think I've been fairly vocal. I do, I do think that it's time that Palo Alto has some form of business tax, like one of the few cities in California that doesn't. And, you know, we're talking about kind of impacts by commuters. So I think a business tax to help fund some of these transportation projects would make a lot of sense.
Is there a particular form that you favor? Like per employee, gross receipts?
You know, I've been talking, talking to the council members in Cupertino and Mountain View and kind of following what they're doing. I think some form of, of head tax might make sense. I think, again, gearing it towards larger companies would also make sense.
Why hasn't this progressed more?
I think it's been a, she, there's been a, a split on council. I actually think for the last year, kind of a minority on council has kept it, kind of kept it off the agenda. So I, I expect after the election, it'll, it'll pick up steam and we'll probably be looking at something in two years.
How does a minority in the council keep something from being discussed?
I mean, it's a great question. We, part of it's the power of setting, setting the agenda. I think we, finance committee, you know, was focused on our infrastructure plan. And so when we're looking at tax, tax measures for this November, the idea of a business tax for transportation was, was kind of put as a second priority compared to the immediate projects in the infrastructure plan.
If this business tax is adopted, would you want it to be completely devoted to grade separations as some have advocated? Or what would the revenues be used for in your vision?
I mean, I think it should be similar to the, the hotel tax and that it would be, it would be a general fund tax. It would be primarily aimed at transportation projects. I think grade separation is going to take kind of multiple funding sources and I've been talking to Jerry Hill, San Mateo County is getting state funds, I think we should be getting state funds. We have the county tax measure, a potential business tax. I think we're going to have to cobble together multiple sources for the grade separations.
And also on the infrastructure front, would you support eliminating any projects from the infrastructure plan? I know some people have talked about downtown garage specifically, but I'm curious if you have any ideas for cutting costs?
Yeah, I mean, I think if you look at, if you look at the ballot arguments for and in the, in the rebuttal to the arguments against, most of the Palo Alto council has signed to support the TOT tax. And it, and it lists the infrastructure plan in that document that we all signed. So I think we should fund the infrastructure plan and kind of as we promised the voters, which includes garage downtown, a garage in Calhav, two fire stations, police station. I think, I think we've kind of made this commitment, commitment to the community kind of multiple times. So I'm not too keen about kind of putting this tax on the ballot and then, you know, killing a bunch of the projects that we told people we were going to fund. I think, I think we could probably do some things to reduce some of the costs, but get some of these projects done.
There's been such an uproar among some in the community about the local transportation issues, the Ross Road project and the sort of the implementation of the bike plan. How did the city mess that up, in your opinion? Did they mess it up? And, and what should be done at this point to try to restore faith among residents that transportation planning within the community is good and sensible?
Yeah, I think, I think there were a couple, a couple of different mistakes. I can say, you know, when it came to council a couple of years ago, the, the extent to which it was going to be, you know, sticking to the street really wasn't, wasn't clear from the plans. I think, I think some of the, the ball bouts and things were pretty aggressive. Kind of more so than, than other, other places where things like this have been built. I mean, I've had, you know, traffic engineers, you know, just say that to me, that this was, this was kind of throwing the kitchen sink at it. I think certainly on the communication side, I think, I think the city attempts to communicate, but that was such a big project that, you know, we should have done more, for sure. But it, you know, it was definitely converting a, a local street to a bike boulevard. So really, it was a pretty major change, change of use of that street. We had a special session where, just on Ross Road, where a lot of the community came. I think most of the people that live on that street are pretty upset. I think, I think the idea of pushing kids in the middle of the street was a hard thing for people to understand. So, you know, in general, I, I support our bike, our bike plans. I, I don't, I don't know, sometimes I think, I think we do overdo it. I'm a little concerned about spending the amount of money we're spending to put in kind of permanent concrete kinds of things where we don't really have data that says it's really necessary. Some of these streets are pretty sleepy. I think striping, it can, can work pretty well. And in general, if we can keep the bike lanes separate from the cars, particularly for a lot of the kids that are biking to school, I think that makes, makes more sense.
So is the breakdown in that particular thing a, a management breakdown? Or a council failure to recognize the magnitude of it or what?
I think there's plenty of blame to go around. I, I think council's responsible, I think. I think it was kind of seen maybe as some staff, it's kind of a showcase project for the latest in bike safety thinking and, and maybe staff should have pulled that back a little bit. I think we're trying to do that on Arastadaro now by, by marking things out ahead of time and trying to listen to some community feedback. And I know a couple of ball bouts have been adjusted based on kind of feedback from people living there, there.
Well, the gentleman most responsible for the Ross Road isn't the city anymore. He's part of a number of high profile exits in recent months, which includes numerous departments, you know, budget and planning. I noticed that in your questionnaire for Palo Alto neighborhoods, you mentioned an idea of addressing the kind of need, the difficulty of having employees here by having like a remote office.
Yeah.
I haven't heard that before, could you talk about that a little and how you would go about implementing that?
This is just a concept and sometimes I get in trouble for throwing out concepts. But it's something I've been talking to Jim Keen about for a little while. And again, I think, I think people who serve the community need to be here in Palo Alto. But the city has some back office functions, you know, other roles where maybe there could be a city of Palo Alto office in another location where people, people could live and work. There's been some thoughts about kind of shared office space where people could go in. So it would almost be like working at home, but they would work, you know, on the East Bay or somewhere on just kind of a temporary basis. But I think a larger idea would be, you know, a city of Palo Alto office in Bakersfield or somewhere. And, and we would have, you know, our accounts payable department there.
Have you talked to ACU about that?
No, it's just a concept. But, you know, I think, I think trying to get creative around retaining employees. And again, it potentially be for new employees. I wouldn't be, you know, hey, you have to move to Bakersfield. But I think it would be something we could transition to over time. I mean, just like a lot of private companies today, I think, I think you have to think about kind of the benefits and, and work life or the personal life of your employees. And so things like that are probably a lot more cost effective than increasing pensions or more typical things cities do.
Aside from concepts like that, are there other things that you think the city can do to kind of make it easier for city employees to, to hire, to retain them, to attract them? Sounds like that's been a problem with all the vacancies and-
Yeah, I also think we're a very demanding city. So we attract, we attract people like a challenge. And those people, you know, they, they work for a couple of years and then they look for another challenge. I, I've been pretty encouraged, I think we've, we've hired from within on several recent positions. And so it's, it's good that we had some bent strength to do that. And, you know, with the new city manager coming in, I think, I think that kind of succession plan is something that the council probably set as one of his goals and, and just encourage him to, to make sure we have people kind of coming up through the ranks. You know, as we were talking about the city manager search, we talked, I was on the, on the recruiting committee, we talked to several recruiters. It's, it's not just Palo Alto, there's, there's definitely kind of this retiring wave of baby boomers in public service. And so it's hitting a lot of cities at the same time. So it's, it's really getting kind of some of the younger generation to get the experience to kind of move up.
How come that search process didn't seem to start earlier?
I'll have to ask the mayor about that one. I think we should have started, I mean, it was no surprise that Jim was retiring. We didn't start and then, and then we got surprised, I think, at how difficult it was going to be to, to find somebody. I mean, we did have a really excellent candidate, I think Ed, Ed's a great hire. And I think, particularly with all these large public works projects coming, I think, I think he's going to be the right guy, hopefully, to, to manage those.
We're running out of time. I do want to ask you one last question though, and that is that, at least as this campaign has developed so far, and we're still in the early stages of it, it's very different than the election two years ago in that candidates seem to be running individually as opposed to sharing resources and essentially what you might call a slate type of a campaign. To what, if that, if you agree that that's happening, to what would you attribute that change to? And is that good for the community?
I haven't, I haven't really been a concern with this idea of slates. I, I think what concerns me more is just the amount of money going to these local elections. I mean, so you had, we had kind of more candidates running two years ago, but all the top candidates raised like a hundred thousand dollars. When I ran four years ago, I think I spent like twenty two thousand dollars as kind of a complete unknown. And incumbents typically spend less. So I, I think it just points to kind of the money at stake in Palo Alto with our land prices. And, and- And, and, you know, I'm, I'm trying to run a, an efficient campaign. I don't know, I could, I think I could raise the money if I need to, but I'm hoping I don't need to. With five candidates running, three incumbents and three openings, it's just a kind of very, kind of different kind of race, as you said. You know, I think?
You said three openings, I think.
Yeah.
Four openings. I'm sorry.
Three.
Three openings. Yeah.
Great.
Lost track.
But, yeah, I mean, when I look at the people running, obviously, I, I work very well with Eric Filthith. I think we kind of share a temperament, kind of an approach to local government. I think Allison Cormack seems thoughtful and she talks about kind of wanting to make fact-based decisions, which is something I like to do. So, you know, I think, I think I could work well with both of them.
Tom DeBois, thank you very much for being here.
Thanks for having me.